I call this meeting of the Winthrop School Board to order. Please, who am I and my thing for the leaders? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution, for which it stands, one nation, united in the Constitution, with liberty and justice for all. We have everyone here today for Catherine and for Catherine today. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, I'd like to move the budget update to new business at a six point two.
And what did you call that?
Budget update.
Any other adjustments? Okay, I do want to make a statement regarding the online participation. Last meeting, there were some conversations happening via Zoom. We want to let the community know that the chat feature this time had been disabled. You want to hear from you, which is why we have my chair, Monica McGowan, monitoring the Zoom to see when people raise their virtual hands. As a reminder, the guidelines for the online participation are as follows. As a participant of the Zoom meeting, if you wish to make a comment, go in the public comments section of the meeting, select the raise your hand option. Your mic will be unmuted, and you will be called upon to make your comment. Please wait to be called upon. The school board may respond to your questions or comments at a later date through the administration or by placing the item on the future agenda. It is required that comments related to specific personnel should be brought up to the appropriate administrator. All comments need to contain to school board-related topics. Moving on to the consideration of the minutes. I'd like to enter the motion to approve the minutes of the Winthrop School Board meeting on September 4th, 2024, as written.
Second.
And all those in favor? I'll open it up to the public comments section at this time. If there are anyone in the room who has a public comment, you may step up to the podium and give us your name. Is there any in the Zoom chat? No. We'll go ahead and close the public comments section and move into our report, starting with the superintendent reporting.
Thank you. Good evening. Tonight completes my second week in Winthrop Public Schools. I have been busy meeting with administrators, board members, staff, and community members to gain perspective on what people see as the strengths and opportunities for growth in the district. I want to thank my administrative team for all their support during the past two weeks. The district is lucky to have such a talented board working team leading the district. We've had two administrative meetings since I began, and we look forward to offering some learning opportunities for the board. And the first one will be Saturday, October 19th, at 9:00 a.m. with Joel Stoneton, our maintenance person, and myself to tour the facilities and the Randall Road property that was brought up at the last board meeting. Then the next one will be in November, November 20th, at 4:30 with Special Ed Director Sue Fawcett to provide you with an overview of special ed. On December 11th, Principal DeFour will give you an overview of the RTI process at the high school. And finally, on June 17th, Josh Farr invites you to the adult ed graduation at 5:00. I will put this all in writing in an upcoming superintendent update. I hope you will find these helpful in learning more about what is going on in the district. And I think there will be a couple more that will be added to that list. I'm also very happy to report that we do have a dropout prevention committee at the high school that meets twice a month. They call it an at-risk committee. What we need to add to be aligned with the statute are additional members who would join that group a couple of times a year. We need a board member, a parent, a high school student, and a dropout. We are working on identifying those individuals. If you're interested in serving as a board member, please let us know. The statute requires that the committee meet once a year. You can see that we are far exceeding that standard. So I want to really thank Principal DeFour and Dean of Students Lexi Discoolis and their staff for all of their efforts in helping all of our students succeed. And lastly, on a good note, the administrative team will be here for a data workshop in October where we will be presenting several data points, including the survey data that was taken last spring. In addition, the team recommends that we would like to do some future workshops on community connection, communication, and one on safety. And we can discuss this further on item seven tonight on future agenda items. But we feel like we could do probably three workshops this year, and one we already have slated as the data workshop. And that concludes my superintendent's report for the evening.
Thank you very much, Dr. Foley. Moving on to our chair report. Last night, I attended the first Winthrop Grade School Forum, a principal forum. There was a great turnout with a really good group of engaged parents. Principal Rendell talked a lot about the Invisible Mentorship Program, which was mentioned last year at a previous board meeting, was in our administrative packet. So it's nice to hear that that program is continuing this year. It had some positive feedback from parents. And I also appreciated the list of the activities and community engagement, with some parent breakfast coming up, and some of the, I'm going to get this wrong, you call it those road street walks or something, so where the streets will march around.
Walk around the block.
Walk around the block, there we go. And so I just really appreciated the effort that went into that meeting last night, that forum, and wanted to say thank you. And that concludes my chair report. You'll notice that on our packets, on our agenda, we have an item 4.3, which is new. It's our student representative report, and it's something that I had brought up last year to our student representatives. And Joseph actually reached out to me an email and reminded me that this had been a discussion and then that he wanted to start this. And so he's going to give us a report this week, and then it will alternate. And so, Joseph.
We'll give some of the credit to Abby, she helped me come up with this. On the school board, student involvement has been one of my main focuses since joining. That's why I'm very pleased to announce that as we enter this new era with a new school year, a new superintendent, a new student rep, and a new attitude, that we also have a new way for students to speak their minds on the board and to let everyone in on some of the good that is happening throughout our school system. With that being said, let's recap that has happened since the beginning of the year. Fall sports are off to a great start. Cross-country events have had a bottoming basis, all of which are settling in very nicely. And the last race was on Saturday with Alfie Cabrera, being able to secure 19th place over Winthrop's top 20 all-time leaderboards. Field hockey started the year off with a 4-0 record and recently beat Booth by eight to zero, correct, they have a game today as well. The football team is undefeated with big wins against both Leve and Lisbon, and both boys and girls soccer has started off the year strong with two win rings against O'Kale and Marinka respectively. Last week, golf leads 4-1 so far and has been playing very well. The team is optimistic that they will make it to state. On a non-athletic side, the starting school has gone very smoothly in the high school. The newly established Randor crew volunteered as helpers for freshman orientation to have things run as easily as possible. Being one of these students, it was nice to see all these faces come to the high school, a new crop of people that was ready to learn and is excited and are truly creative in their lives. And from what I've seen so far, they're all settling in super well. To wrap this up, the drama club is excited to plan a trip to New York City, and I believe there's an informational parent night coming up tomorrow at 6:30 in the pack to help get more people in the loop about what that trip will entail. This wraps up the first student report, and I hope that this edition is appreciated by the board and the public and will become a mainstay in the meeting agenda in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Joseph and Abigail, very much. We'll move on to our committee reports, starting with my names.
Yes, we met. We discussed the budget timeline for the year and looked at dates under those items. We looked at the budget and updated the team of what that looks like. We got a discussion on the electric buses, and we signed off on a lot of warrants, which I'll read off. Payroll five, five, one, and six. Warrants 23B, 24B, 24C, 25A, 25B, 26A, 26B, 27, 1A, 1B, 3A, 3B, and 4A.
Thank you, Tim. And for policy, we did meet Catherine Zowick today. We met twice as a committee. And Alexis Discoolis will lead the first read for us under new business portion of the meeting. And for negotiations? We did not meet. Moving on to item 4.5, the administrative reports, which are attached. Does the board have any questions regarding the questions that come?
Could we first start off with the highlight from Beckenly. As the director of teaching and learning, I'm going to have one administrator at each of these times highlight something in their report, and she is going to tell you about an initiative we're implementing this year called, I believe, the Regulated Classroom.
Awesome, thank you, folks. So I'm happy to give a little bit more information that was highlighted in my report. But to start off, we were really fortunate on our second workshop day this year, we had Emily Daniels, who is the author of the Regulated Classroom, join us for an opening keynote with all of our staff to focus on co-regulation and how we can use that to improve felt safety in our classrooms. The Regulated Classroom focuses on practices and specific tools that help shift how we experience stress in the moment by increasing self-awareness. So this can help both students and staff and our schools to quickly recover when there's some sort of stress-inducing circumstance and be able to return to a regulated state in their nervous system. And all of the work that she does, and that we'll be doing this year, is really focused around four core practices. Connectors, I'll tell you a little bit about each of those. The connectors, these are activities that you do with your students that help to cultivate relationships and bring joy. When we had her as keynote, the whole staff actually did many of these, at least one each connector, which was really fun. They did a back-to-back countdown, so you got actually physically back-to-back with people, which even as adults, we all gamble a little bit because that felt closeness is different to us, especially on this side of COVID. And then you count down three, two, one, you show the number between one and five at first, and one and 10, you had to add or multiply or whatever. So it's a small activity that brings you physically closer together that can also be engaging as well. One other thing, when I went to the training that Emily put on, is something called cart talks, and it's a way that you situationally place your body next to someone while you're having a conversation and kind of let things roll that way too, because it helps to increase that connection and also less threat response. Another, one of the other core practices is activators, and these are meant to energize folks, engage them, and usually improve rhythm. If you were able or have considered following a WPS on social media, there's a video on there of all of our staff doing an activity club called Clap Tap, which is an activator that brings you together through rhythmic noises, and everyone's kind of clapping their mouth. Another core practice, and I've already seen this in action several times in several different grade levels this year, are settlers, and these are activities that are intended to calm and create peace in a space. We did this as a staff, and I seen staff and heard staff do it with students. It's called a passing rainstorm. So it starts very quietly, it builds, it builds to kind of a cacophony, and then quiets right back down. So it's used, using your hands to make that noise. And so it brings students up and then back down, and then everyone's at a moment where they're ready to focus and get started. And then the last core practice is affirmations, and these are meant to deepen positive associations specifically with school. So this is practicing gratitude, and this is one that we didn't really work on as a staff, we talked about it a little bit, so hoping to continue to build that this year. And we feel very fortunate to be able to build that this year because last year, the D.O.E. provided lots of train-the-trainer sessions with Emily for free, and we sent over 10 staff there. We have two folks that went over this summer and two more folks who are taking advantage of the end of that opportunity this month. So as part of that, they received, I think it's 10 or 12 books apiece. So at this point, we're able to, for free, outfit our entire district with her book, and we're going to continue this work with her toolkit for this year. Very excited to start the book kickoff on our October workshop day.
Thank you, Megan.
Okay, does the board have any questions for Megan, or from the administrative reports in the packet? Okay, thank you very much. I do, I actually did have some comments here. With the Winthrop Middle School Administrator Report, I really appreciated the paragraph including the safety training that has occurred after a board member asked about it, so I thought that would be really nice to include that. And then the high school, I really loved reading through all of the three pages of positive things, and I read every single one of them, and so I just, yeah, it was great, I started this one. All of the staff in the building, both veteran and new staff, have all been working together and working very hard to ensure a great start to the school year. I've noticed a greater sense of dependence this year, and that was really pushing me, so I wanted to write that up. And the young athletes program with the special ed department, that was so cool. So I just really appreciate your report, and I want you to know that, you know, we are reading them and we see them, so thank you very much.
I also wanted to say, if I may, how much I love having the teachers' voices here, having the students' voices, thank you. That was terrific. I'm looking forward to these. So that was terrific. And then having the teachers' voices from high school, fantastic. It's really good to give us an inside look at what's going on in the past of things.
Any other board questions? Okay. We'll move into our old business, 5.1, a plan regarding selling property on Randor Road. Item added to discuss giving town approval for moving forward, and we'll turn that over to Dr. Foley.
So you have a memo in your packet, as you know, at the last board meeting, that gentleman came forward and requested that we look into this because he's interested in buying that parcel. So that's part of what we will be doing on Saturday, October 19th, at 9:00. We'll be touring that property along with all of the facilities. And then we will put that on a future, the following board meeting agenda for discussion here, and then I will inform that community member of the outcome of the discussion. We do not actually own the property, the town does. So if the board is in favor of selling a parcel of the property, we will then turn it over to the town. If they're not, I will then communicate that to the town. So those are our next steps on that.
Thank you. Does the board have any questions? Okay, moving on to item 5.2 under old business, the electric bus discussion.
Okay, so I just want to, I've had to counter-rap my brain around this in the last two weeks. So I just want to remind you that in October of 2022, we received word from Lion Electric that they had received funding for $1,580,000 for Winthrop to replace four buses and for the charging infrastructure. And as part of the agreement, they need to serve the Winthrop Public Schools for at least five years. The buses were delivered last June of 2023. There were some immediate issues with the buses not passing inspections that were fixed. But then we also had, we've had other issues. We've had water leaks around windshields and windows, we've had some heater failures, we've had brake and steering issues, we've had some charging problems, and I think Josh has done a fabulous job of kind of keeping you updated on all of those issues. So this is kind of a review for you. The most recent problem was we had water accumulation in the can connector, and we are still awaiting those parts. We thought maybe they'd be here Monday or Tuesday, but they're still not here. But we're still hopeful that they'll arrive within the week. We know that electric buses help reduce the carbon footprint, they reduce carbon emissions, and that they're safe to drive. Obviously, when we're having error messages and issues, we take them off the road. I also contacted today the Yarmouth Superintendent, who has, you know, the buses, and they've had similar issues. And when there are no errors, they're driving the bus. There have been several error messages, and so when that happens, they do exactly what we're doing. So I'm in hopes that we can get the buses back on the road once they've had this most recent recall fixed. Before we put them back on the road, we're going to test drive them for two weeks, just to ensure that we don't have any error messages. We have drivers that are eager to drive these buses, and we would then recommend, if we get, if this all fits that timeline, to begin to use the buses for local trips the week of October the 7th.
Thank you. Does the board have any questions for Dr. Foley? I'm just curious about the five, you say five years availability? And so does that start when we got them, or does this have to, does it start?
No, I think it starts when we, Josh, when did we first drive the bus?
Well, we took delivery of them in June of 2023, and so they were on the road pretty much immediately after we took delivery for training and so forth.
So I would think it starts now.
Okay, I just wasn't sure if they, when they're out of commission, but do we? Yes, Monica?
I have a question. One, I think that sounds, I have expressed a lot of concern about the buses. The idea of having that, having them pass the inspections and having that two-week driving period makes me feel so much better. Is this an issue that we need to vote on? I also wanted to ask you, Josh, how you feel about that plan?
Okay, I guess as far as the two-week testing period, I would like to just get some clarification. Perhaps Dr. Foley and I can talk separately about this, but do we have a specific sort of regimen in mind for what we're expecting to happen during that two-week period? Obviously, we transport students in them, but do we want to say each vehicle is to be driven so many miles, so many hours, that sort of thing? I think Dr. Foley and I just haven't reached the point of being able to have that conversation yet, so perhaps this is a good time to have it, and perhaps it's not. But I just would say, once these, once this recall is taken care of and those repairs are done, I would like, does this have some clarity as to what that expectation is? Is it a, is it a short test drive, once or twice, or is it several hours of driving each day, just so that we can kind of be on the same page?
For you?
I think I would recommend that we just test, do a short test drive every day, and then that's 10 days worth of driving, and I think that that would suffice.
Do you have questions, Monica?
We'll leave that iron out, but you know, the details of what short means and if it would be comparable to, you know, the route one day, one circuit, or something like that, we can work those details out as we go forward, yes?
Well, I think that I would just work that out with Josh, like just have them on a reg, you know, if they have time to just go on a regular bus run without, you know, stopping, five times, stop, and stop, to me, that would suffice.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Okay. Moving on to our new business. I'll turn the time over to Alexis Discoolis to talk about policies being brought to the board today.
Good evening. First, I'd like to thank the Policy Committee for meeting with me twice already this full year, and I know that your time is very valuable, and so I'd like to say that I appreciate you taking the time. On this matter regarding our title line policies, we are updating our title line policies to match the current regulations that will be in place in August of this year. We anticipate meeting at least one more time, if not twice, to get all of these thought out. I thought the best way to handle these policies in regards to how they work is just give you a brief kind of bullet point status on all of them collectively, and then just the two that are in front of you tonight. They do look cumbersome, but that's just because some of the policies have been split at least a two, so there's a lot of things that are crossed off simply because then they're, they are attributed to a second policy. So the new timeline regulations have some significant changes on how we respond to sexual, sex-based harassment, discrimination claims. These regulations require that K through 12 public schools disseminate information regarding our policies and reporting happenings. The following are the biggest changes that you will see. Expanded definitions of sex-based discrimination. The definitions now include sexual orientation, gender identity, gender expression, and pregnancy with pregnancy-related conditions. Their expanded definitions of sex-based harassment now includes totality of circumstances, which is subjectively and objectively, so how the person takes it in and how the general populace takes it in, so subjectively and objectively offensive, and so severe or pervasive, no longer has to be severe and pervasive, it could be either or, that limits or denies a person's ability to participate in or benefit from a school's education program or activity. There's a broader scope of potential wrongdoing. It now includes programs and activities regardless of where it occurred. This is a very big change. If the wrongdoing is affecting a student in school, it is our responsibility to investigate, mediate, and work towards a resolution, even if the wrongdoing took place outside of school. Heightened oversight. It now imposes duty on our school system to more actively monitor our programs and activities and eliminate barriers to responding, which is why we're updating our policies. Expanded reporting requirements, so now all employees have an obligation to notify the title line coordinator of known or suspected discrimination and or harassment, which is why all of our staff is being trained. There's an increased emphasis on supportive measures. We, as a school district, will provide support to complainants at all stages of the grievance process. There are two policies that are being presented for first reading today. ACA-A, which is now called harassment of students. Previously, it was harassment and sexual harassment of students. I should explain that all of these recommendations are based on lawyers, not on my personal recommendations. So harassment of students encompasses everything, and that would be ACA-A. That is a list of protected classes and a little bit of a description of harassment and what it means. And then ACA-A-R1, Student Discrimination and Harassment Complaint Process. This was formerly Student Discrimination and Harassment in Title Nine Sexual Harassment Complaint Procedure. ACA-A-R, we are breaking out into ACA-A-R1 and ACA-A-R2. And this will come up again when it's ACA-B-R, it will be broken up into ACA-B-R1 and ACA-B-R2. So in ACA-A, is everybody still with me? I feel like, okay, good. ACA-A, to substantially revise for clarity and to reflect changes in the title line regulations, which were effective August 1st, 2024. It lists out protected classes by bullet points and clarifies the definitions of some of these categories. Sexual harassment has not changed under the main state law, so there's not a lot of changes in this. Sexual harassment has not changed under the main state law, so there's not a lot of changes in this policy. Sexual harassment does now include sex-based harassment, pregnancy, and pregnancy-related conditions, which create a broader scope of coverage. That is policy ACA A. In policy AAR one, for clarity, both Drummond and Wissam and the Main School Management Association recommend creating separate procedures to address all types of discrimination and harassment in one policy. And then in other policy, we will address sex discrimination. This will separate out the sexual and sex-based harassment from non-sexual and sex-based harassment. This update provides general guidance with updated language, which connects into all the other updated policies. The biggest change here, other than the separating out of the two policies, is that the completion dates have been updated to school days instead of working days or week days. That concludes the information I have to provide for you this evening. Unless there are any questions.
Does the board have any questions? Yes, Ivy?
I do. It has been made brought to my attention that wind-up schools are included on a lawsuit which prevents the Title Nine amendments from taking effect until after litigation is reached.
If this is anything that happened prior to my tenure as the Title Nine Coordinator, I'm not privy to that information, so I can't, I can't address that. And I also think that that would be a matter for a private conversation, not public conversation. But I don't know.
Yeah, I was made aware of that information, so I wasn't sure if we all have been providing that. So I will see if I can get that in a document and supply it to everybody.
Thank you, Ivy. Are there any other questions or comments for the board from the board?
Before we vote on this, I just want to make sure that we have the correct title of the new policy.
Sure.
So I think that ACA AR one is more Student Discrimination and Harassment Complaint Procedure.
Correct. So ACA AR one is Student Discrimination and Harassment Complaint Procedure. Previously, it was, it included Title Nine sexual harassment.
Right. But we'd be voting on the first reading of the new title.
Correct.
Has the title of ACA A changed at all?
Yes, it also takes out sexual harassment. It is just harassment of students.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And Ivy, I'd be happy to follow up with you and look into that before we do the second reading.
I just want to say it looks like a lot of hard work.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Well, hold on to your hats because there's a lot more to come.
Any other comments from the board? Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you so much. So I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to approve the following policy and procedure for first reading. ACA A harassment of students and ACA AR one, student discrimination, harassment, and complaint procedure.
So I'm with yours.
Second.
All of them favor? Thank you very much. And thank you very much, Alexis, for putting that all together. Okay, moving on to our new business, six point two, the added item to our agenda, which is the budget update. With Dr. Foley.
So I've passed out to the board. I'm just passing that around. An update, and I think there are everything copies in for the audience. Because it's a lot of numbers that we're going to go through here. And I apologize to those at home that are, you know, that are unable to have a paper copy. But well, I'll make sure that this gets posted online so that you can review this. So in my two weeks here, one of the things that former Superintendent Hodgkin said, he said the budget was tight when he met with me. So that just made me want to make that one of my priorities of kind of digging into that. And so I have been digging into this with the Finance Officer, Nick Poole from the town, Ida, who's the Finance Specialist in my office, and also Deb Roberts from Main School Management. And so as of today, this is what I know. And for the most part, there are some facts in here, but a lot of these are estimations. So I just want to say that. And I'm erring on the side of extreme caution with my recommendations. So here we go. So a little historical data that you'll see there. At the, for budget year two thousand twenty-two, at the end of the year, about this time, the auditors will come in and they will audit the previous year. And then we get those results. We probably won't get them until February, January or February. But for that year, the audited amount at the end of the year, meaning what, how much money did we have left over from the total budget? The fund balance was one million, five hundred and ten thousand, nine hundred and forty. For the following year, two thousand twenty-three, the fund balance at the end was nine hundred ninety-six thousand, eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars. At the year that, at the end of this past year, June thirtieth, the un-audited, so because we haven't had the audit yet, they're coming in in October. But with the Finance Office, this is their best estimate that we're going to end up with an undesignedated fund balance of a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, a hundred and sixty-four. And then just to help everybody be clear, because I know it's a lot of numbers, we just began July first with budget two thousand twenty-five. So I want to walk you through the two thousand twenty-four budget. They took that undesignedated fund balance from twenty-three of nine hundred ninety-six thousand, eight hundred and fifty-nine. And they decided to use two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to help as a revenue source for the twenty-four budget. That left seven hundred and twenty-one thousand, eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars in the fund balance. Then in April of this past year, in two thousand twenty-four, on the recommendation of the Superintendent, the Town Council voted to take six hundred thousand out of that remaining, seven hundred and twenty-one thousand, and move it to a capital improvement fund. And so then that left a fund balance of a hundred and twenty-one thousand. June thirtieth of this year, when that, when our budget year was over, we only had, this is what we estimate, thirty-three thousand, three hundred and five dollars left over from the twelve million dollar budget. That is point two six percent of your total budget. And you're always wanting to aim for something around three percent. So that meant that when you add that to what was remaining from the previous year, that we have an estimated, I emphasize that, a hundred and fifty-five thousand, one hundred and sixty-four dollars. Now, this is where the problem comes in. When the budget was created for the current year that we're in, this, I haven't spoken to Superintendent Hodgkin, but I'm assuming that he thought there was going to be a healthier fund balance because he earmarked and you voted on using three hundred and ninety-five thousand as a revenue source, when there's not three hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars there. It's only now going to be a hundred and fifty-five thousand, one hundred and sixty-four dollars. That's estimated, I'm saying again, because that's un-audited. So that leaves you with a deficit in the revenue area of two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred and thirty-six dollars. In addition, from what I understand, is that his initial budget that he presented to you was at a seven percent increase. And it was decided that that was too high. And so he lowered it to a four percent increase. And when he did that, it, he cut and circed the lines. And so when we started digging into the budget in the last two weeks, I have discovered that I believe that we are under budgeted in many areas of the salary and benefits. If we flip to the second page, you will see the bud, budget over. Meaning we're, you know, we're budgeted some things, but we're already over. Because what happens with salaries and benefits after the first or second payroll is that you can encumber all that money in it. You can see whether you're going to have enough. We know what, we know who we have employed, so we know what we're going to have to pay them. So that's why we're pretty confident in those amounts. So if we're right, then this is going to create, there's a budget deficit there in the salary and benefits of four hundred and forty-one thousand, three hundred and seventy-one dollars. So when you add that to not having enough of the revenue, that comes up with a total of a deficiency for six hundred and eighty-one thousand and two hundred and seven dollars. Right now, in our total budget of, that's thirteen million, four hundred and fifty-two dollars and three, thirteen million, four hundred and fifty-two thousand, three hundred and eighty-three dollars, we have an estimated one point seven million for other operating expenses for this year. It's only September. So we have gas that we have to put into buses. We have utility bills. There are maintenance agreements that we might have that I'm not aware of yet. So my plan is to dig deeper to try to get a more accurate number. But because of this, I have notified the administrators today that the budget has now been frozen. I do not take that lightly. I have never had to freeze a budget. But you can see the numbers, and I hope you can support why I'm doing that. I also will continue to dig into the numbers with Nick Poole, the Town Finance Manager, and Ida on a regular basis and keep you updated at the board meeting. I believe that we should request from the Town Council to allow us to move part of that, we've already spent part of that six hundred thousand that was earmarked for maintenance. But we do have three hundred and eighteen thousand, six hundred and fourteen dollars that we could move back. That means that we will not be completing phase two of the project that we were going to do. That would leave us with three hundred and sixty-two thousand, five hundred and ninety-three dollars to cover if we spend all of that one point seven million. I need to also consult with the school attorney to determine what is needed if we exceed the total voter-approved budget expenditures of thirteen million, four hundred and fifty-two dollars and three. Thirteen million, four hundred and fifty-two thousand, three hundred and eighty-nine dollars that the voters approved. And I think that concludes my update, and I'm happy to take questions.
Does the board have any questions for Dr. Foley, Ivy?
I know much of us are a little concerned that we are, that there is quite a significant deficit. So in trying to understand this better, the misinformation that's kind of being spread amongst our community that's in regards to legal fees, I'm trying to understand from you that that is not the case, that it's actually errors when calculating and going through and adjusting the budget that's last year that got approved?
Well, we had an overage that I can't, so I do not have the numbers memorized, but I'll use an estimated number that I think that you have ten thousand dollars budgeted for legal fees. And last year, we used thirty-five thousand for many different cases. And I don't have the detail, nor do I think it's important of what that meant for. So you, you know, we can consult, we consult attorneys for many different things. If we're in negotiations, usually they will review the contract, different things like that. But we also obviously used attorneys for, you know, when you were going through the transition with the Superintendent and things like that. So that thirty-five thousand, where you spent more than twenty-five thousand that was budgeted, is part of the reason, is one tiny piece of the reason why we ended up with thirty-three thousand, three hundred and five dollars at the end of the year.
Any other questions for Dr. Foley?
You're welcome.
Seeing none, we'll move on. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Moving on to section seven, public comments. Is there any comments on the phone? If someone's in the podium, we can just turn these over. If there are anyone soon, please raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll go into the suggested additions to future agendas by school board members. And I'll just share that all ideas and brainstorms will be accepted. We're going to be talking about, I think Dr. Foley will be talking about some ideas that she has spoken with her administrative team about. And then if there are other ideas in addition to what she may present, we can certainly add those to our list. And then I'll discuss about that later in time.
So we're bringing you the data workshop, which we've had before. So I don't feel like I need to go into details about that. And it's pretty much prepped, so I hope you don't need to throw that down. The other two areas that the administrative team felt like that they've heard questions in the past that might be timely, is just one about, you know, what are we doing to promote positive communication and connection with our parents and community? So we feel like we could give you an update on that with each of the three principals speaking to that and telling different things that they're doing and they're building this year to promote connection in the community and with parents. The other area that I think, if you haven't had in a while and that they believe that would be worth kind of going over, is just safety. What do we do to ensure that all of our students are safe? And to give you a high-level look at that. And so those were the, we actually talked about doing something around response to intervention. And we moved that to a board learning opportunity within the school because we felt like that would be a more intimate setting where you can see kind of in real time what they're doing and they could have some of their staff members present. And so we took that one off the list and came up with these three that we're open to. But if there are other ideas they could rather have this year, we are certainly here to listen to your thoughts and discuss. And then as a whole, have the board decide, you know, what is their preference? And then I think anything that we can't get to this year, we can just put in a parking lot for future workshops at board meetings.
Thank you, Dr. Foley. Does the board have any suggestions or ideas, Ivy?
One, I'd like to say that I'm interested in being part of the committee. One, I'd like to say that I'm interested in being part of the DROPO committee.
Oh, great.
Very interested in that. I know one thing I have asked about having more of a non-formal, open forum, board in the community. I think that's a great way to kind of build that. I also would love to have another one, propose another one with the admins and teachers in the board, because I think that would be a wonderful start to getting to know and building that relationship as well. And then I also want to say that the football games, I haven't had a chance to get to the others, because I have two children that are involved in that. It was awesome to see Jolene pop in. She was quite proud of watching all the little ones play and cheer. So it was, it was wonderful to see that. It was great.
Thank you, Ivy. Your ideas, the board have any other ideas?
I just wanted to say, talking about communication, I was so thrilled, Prince Randall, to see that you had begun these forums and that they were really well-attended and that it's something that you plan to do going forward. That's wonderful.
Any more ideas for future additions to agendas? Okay. I think these are really wonderful ideas. Actually, I am interested in all of those, but as a board, we'll discuss at a later time to decide. And I think the board has taken things that I've been really interested in about. And so thank you very much for working with the team and coming up to those for us.
So what are you thinking about when you'll decide? Each one of those takes a while.
Okay.
And so, I mean, but I'm happy to not make the decision, right? If the board members, I think, Ivy, what you're requesting really isn't a board workshop, it's just a different type of forum that we can kind of talk about what that might look like or whatever.
Okay, so let me just clarify the three here that we have. And then of course, we have, Ivy brought the forums, and then the...
So I think we just, I'm only hearing about that everybody seems okay with those three workshops. And then what we'll do is look at the board agenda and determine, you know, when we could do each one.
That's great. And thank you for clarifying, because I didn't realize you wanted us to make decisions tonight.
Do we need to make a motion to be able to add this and vote on it now?
I don't really think this requires a motion. I just want kind of a consensus among the board members.
I have my support.
Yeah, I see your support as well.
Great. Thank you so much. We'll plan for those.
Looking forward to it. Okay, so moving on to item eight, our school board comments. School boards, student representatives, or members.
I do want to say that while very daunting, you know, hearing those numbers and, you know, very concerning about how we will figure that all out, I just want to thank you for the incredible amount of work that has gone in to digging that out so that we can address it and take care of it moving forward. Thank you, Dr. Foley.
You're welcome.
Any other board comments? At this time, we'll move into an executive session, so we'll have those who contributed the initiatives and who are not. Thank you.